Good evening and welcome to the August 27th Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have, in accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on August 23rd, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely, Mr. Kins. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Sasan?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda we have executive session, but I just want to inform you that we did not meet an executive session. So continuing on to correspondence is as described in the agenda. I'd like to move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my pleasure today to introduce a new member of our leadership team, Mr. Michael Picatoli. I hope that I pronounced that right, Michael. Michael is here with his family. He will be our new vice principal at Aris Intermediate School. And to just share with the public as well as the board our process that we went through in order to make this important recommendation to the school board, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Scott Brockup.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Just as a reminder to the Board of Education, all of our administrative positions go through a process of identifying candidates that are highly qualified to take on the position. This position was no different. There was a rigorous process. There were 150 applicants for the pool. Fourteen of those applicants were picked to go through a 45-minute interview with the principal and the vice principal. After those rounds, the vice principal and principal identified six quality candidates to go on to a committee of stakeholders which represented Aris. After that committee met, three finalists were identified, two of which accepted the offer to come to the final level of interviews, which included Dr. Schiff, Dr. Antunes, myself, and Mr. Carey. It was clear when we got to that level that there was a candidate who was outstanding, somebody who had all the skills we were looking for, somebody who was ready to help lead us in this district. And that individual that we will be recommending to the board tonight is Michael Picatoli. A little bit about Michael is he actually holds two master's degrees. He has a Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership from the College of St. Elizabeth, where he graduated with a 4.0. He has a Master's of Science in Educational Technology from Ramapo College of New Jersey, which he graduated with a 4.0. He also has a Bachelor's Degree in History, which he received from Ramapo College. He has been a middle school teacher at Scotch Plains-Fanwood since 2003. He also did his administrative internship at Scotch Plains-Fanwood. There's a ton of leadership and administrative experiences in which Mr. Picatoli has participated in since he started his studies to become an administrator. He has demonstrated outstanding ability to lead in his, what will soon to be former district, and we are hoping that that will continue here in Hillsborough. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Picatoli to Hillsborough Township Public Schools.
With that, I ask that the board that we move a motion on the agenda, B/7.1, which is Mr. Picatoli's appointment for board action at this time.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to affirm Mr. Picatoli as vice principal for Aris.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Mr. Durek and Santafante, please. Thank you.
Roll call. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Sasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Picatoli. At this time, your principal, Mr. Carey, has a few words that he would like to say, I believe.
He's making.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's, we jumped the gun here. Mr. Picatoli is joined by his lovely wife and two children, as well as his parents are here this evening. I ask that the board entertain a five-minute recess at this time to meet Mr. Picatoli and his family.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Mr. Carey, principal of Aris Intermediate School.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. I just wanted to thank the board and the central administration for their support and our selection for Mike. We're very excited to have him with us, and we know he brings a lot of wonderful leadership experiences already, that he's going to complement our school with professional learning communities, technology integration, and we're very excited for that. We know there's a little learning curve, but he's a real sharp guy, and we're going to get him up to speed real fast. And again, I just want to congratulate him and thank his family for coming this evening. So congratulations.
Very nice.
Thank you very much. We have been doing a great deal of work writing the school district for the start of the school year, and our first board meeting of September, our administrators here at the dais will be presenting little mini reports. Mr. Rocco will talk about the hiring that we've done over the summer. Dr. Antunes will discuss all of the curriculum that has been written this summer, as well as Mr. Mahmoud will be sharing with the board and the public the progress on all the construction projects that we've been working on since the school year ended. So with that, that's all I have for this evening, except to say we're very excited to start the school year.
Okay, we'll move to the approval of minutes, starting off with the July 16th, 2012 special meeting. May I have a?
Motion?
A motion to approve the meetings from that, the minutes from that meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
Sasan and Santafante. Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor of abstention?
Any, we have a second. Any comments or discussion? Okay. I just have one grammatical clarification on page three.
Okay.
Just that we do just.
Gotcha.
Or how, if it's good.
We'll make that.
So that, I had a correction on page three. It was just about, it was more of a grammatical, speaking about metrics and the math program. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
No abstentions.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving to the July 23rd, 2012 special meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, any comments or discussion? Okay, see none. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. The July 23rd executive session, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Callorine, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Chris? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
Yep.
The July 23rd regular meeting minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Gotcha.
Any discussion? Okay, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? And lastly, the July 30th special meeting, 2012, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next step is public input on random drug testing. This is an item that we have on the agenda that we will have for the next few meetings throughout September and into October. What I'd like to do first, I've noticed that there was in the press, a couple of different articles, there were some online discussions, and I'd actually like to spend a little bit of time just clarifying, I think there may have been some, there may be some misunderstanding with regard to the policy. So what I'd like to do is review the policy, state what it does, how it's implemented, and then also inform the public on what the school, the school board has done with regard to investigating it, deliberating on it, and then bringing it up to vote and where we're at right now. So from the policy, the board acknowledges its responsibility to provide the most conducive learning environment for all students, and recognizes that unless schools and their students are substance-free, the best conditions for learning do not exist. The board also acknowledges that a significant number of young people are unfortunately already involved in the abuse of alcohol and other drugs, and that school-based initiatives have proven particularly effective in recognizing and remediating students developing alcohol or other drug disturbances. The board further recognizes that this is a treatable health problem, and is committed to the rehabilitation of substance users by educational and therapeutic means, but the board will take the necessary and appropriate steps to protect the school community from harm and from exposure to harmful substances. The Board of Education also recognizes that the problem of legal drug and alcohol use presents a continuing challenge in its schools and a clear danger to the pupil population as a whole. The district's commitment to maintaining athletics, extracurricular activities, and parking in a safe, healthy, and secure educational environment requires a clear policy and supportive programs relating to the detection and prevention of substance abuse by pupils involved in athletics and extracurricular activities. Consistent with the U.S. Supreme Court ruling, Board of Education of Independent School District 92 of Potawatomi County versus Earls, the New Jersey Supreme Court ruling, and 100 and Central High School Board of Education, it is the policy of the Board of Education to direct the chief school administrator to implement and conduct a program of random drug testing of pupils in athletics, extracurricular activities, school clubs, pupils' granted parking permits for on-campus parking. Eligibility shall apply until graduation or a drop form is completed. Primary emphasis in administering, administering this program should be directed toward deterrence and remediation rather than punishment of pupils who test positive for alcohol, non-prescribed medications, illegal drugs, or their metabolites. Consequences for a pupil who tests positive for illegal drugs or their metabolites will be followed according to board regulation. This policy is not intended to be disciplinary or punitive in nature, as indicated by existing court decisions as it relates to loss of instructional time. No pupil shall be expelled or suspended from school as a sole result of any verified test conducted by the school under the random drug testing program. So in terms of how it's implemented, Hillsborough High School students who participate in extracurricular activities, sports, or parking are the subject population, in which the student signs an acknowledgement and agreement that they are subject to random drug testing during the period of the said activity. Students participating in an inter-scholastic sport, as governed by the NJISAA, they participate in a separate and additional random drug agreement, which applies to students who have qualified as individuals or as members of a team for state championship competition. Drug screens include stimulants, anabolic agents, and diuretics. Penalty of testing positive is that the student will not be able to compete in NJISAA competitions for one year. Hillsborough High School students who are part of the High School, are part of the Hillsborough High School random drug testing pool until they are no longer participating in extracurricular activities, sport, or parking, and specifically request to be removed from the pool. When a student's name is selected, they are contacted during the school day and are asked to report to the nurse's office, in which they submit a urine sample to be tested. The drug screen includes marijuana, opiates, amphetamines, PCP, and cocaine. Steroids are not part of the Hillsborough High School drug screen, although they are part of the NJISAA. Students who test positive are suspended from the extracurricular activities or have their parking privileges suspended and are provided counseling services. Students who test positive are not suspended from school. Students are allowed to return when they have satisfied the criteria for returning, which includes testing negative on a retest, completing required five individual sessions with the SAC, and completing the required five drug education sessions with the SAC. There is also, there has been an anonymous validated survey of drug use and attitudes and behaviors that has been administered each year. And in that, in that survey, which was reported on before, students may opt out if requested. There are no actions that may arise because the tests are anonymous. That survey was from the American Drug, it was the American Drug and Alcohol Survey, was administered annually, but that test administration company has actually gone out of business, so that test and survey is no longer available. Students that are suspected of being under the influence within school are addressed under a separate policy and regulation and are immediately sent for drug testing at an external facility. Those who test positive are provided supportive measures but are also disciplined under school policy regulations and student code of conduct. With regard to the school board, this has actually been a fairly long process that this board and actually the previous board have worked on. In December, within the education committee, in the December 15th meeting, it was brought on to the agenda for that education committee, and it was tabled until January. At that meeting, discussions began on the pupil random drug testing policy. Dr. Antunes provided feedback that she obtained from Mrs. Karen Bingert, principal at the high school, and also Mrs. Lorraine Borak, who was the nursing supervisor. In February, in mid-February, Dr. Antunes updated the committee that there would be a recommendation from Mrs. Bingert and Mrs. Borak by the end of May. And June 11th was a presentation to the education committee by Dr. Antunes on the random drug testing policy and how it's been implemented and the performance of that, the implementation of that policy. Ms. Bingert and Mrs. Borak were present at that education committee and fielded questions to that. At that point in time, it was a new, it was with the new organization, so it was a new education committee, which is chaired by Tuyen Lay, and the members, the voting members are Lorraine Sasan, Judy Haas, and, and Tuyen. Well, you're chair, oh Judy Haas and then Lorraine, and then I'm a non-voting member on that. On July 3rd, Dr. Antunes updated her presentation to incorporate questions that the committee had, and the education committee took the following action. They unanimously recommended to the full board the elimination of Policy 5131, which is the pupil random drug testing policy. In addition, they requested for continuing educational measures, also to look into other law enforcement measures with the Hillsborough Police Department to deter use of drugs and alcohol on school grounds. In, let's see, there was, which July meeting was when it went to the board to discuss?
July 23rd.
On July 23rd, we, it was brought to the full board for vote, in which there was much discussion, and the decision was to table the vote until October so that we can solicit public input. And it's, the discussion is on the tape. And then on August 23rd, just this past week, the education committee reviewed the policies related to random drug testing and the survey that the education committee is putting together for public consumption to provide additional feedback to both the education committee and the full board. Dr. Schiff shared that he met with Chief Paul Kaminsky, the Hillsborough Police Department, discussed the process of requesting canine sweeps at the high school, and I'll allow additional detail to be provided by Dr. Lay, by Mrs. Lay in the, in the committee reports. So I just wanted to share with the board, with the public, what the policy actually is, how it's implemented, and how both this board and previous boards have addressed the random drug testing policy. So now I'd like to open it up to public comment. And if you could state your name and address, please, and this is for public comment, and we can listen and then.
My name is Marissa Sladic. I live at 681 Dover Court, Unit E, here in Hillsborough. I come before you for two different unrelated reasons. First, I will be asking for supply lists to be given to parents prior to the first week, or the week before school.
Just real quick, we appreciate coming up. We actually have a section on new business, so I wanted to limit this to drug testing. If there, if there aren't, you can probably stay up, it looks like that we may not, ah, we have one member in the audience? Okay. I'll announce when it's for new business. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Mark Rosenberg, Nine Good Boys Round. It's kind of liberating to be on this side. I wanted to come and talk about random drug testing and give you some input, not only from me, but from people I've talked to. And this isn't really about whether you should or shouldn't do it. It's about clearing the air about all of the things that are, misnomers about it and what the risks are. I wrote a letter about this, and I want to just reiterate, there are people who have said to me, this is illegal. It is not illegal, it is not unconstitutional. Courts up and down the line have given approval to this, and someone has said, well, we only do it for students who are in activities, so in some respects, it's not fair. That's kind of true, but the only reason it hasn't been deployed to everybody, all the students in the school, is because nobody has done so, because it would require a court challenge. The only reason the courts, the only thing the courts have said that you can't do is deny someone a efficient, what is it, a full and efficient education. But there, and so this idea of being in an activity was one way to get around it, but I don't think that giving it to everybody would merit a problem, be that as it may. It is, it is legal, it is constitutional. We search for all kinds of things in the schools. Now, the question would be, you know, is it fair? And people have said, well, the teachers don't have to submit to random drug testing, and that's true. And students over 18, I believe, don't have to submit to random drug testing, and that's true. So the argument about whether it's fair or not is a stronger argument than whether or not it is legal. The next issue, of course, is, is it working? I've looked at the data that was presented at public meetings, and I notice about, there were about 5% positives in the first two years, and 20% positives in the last year, but you only tested 50 people for reasons that I have no clue about why you would do that. So the question is, is it working? You have to ask yourself a couple of questions. Number one, is it a deterrent? What data do you have to show that students have shied away from drugs because of the concern they might have of being tested? Number two, has it saved anybody? What is the value of saving one child or intervening in one child? Would that be something that you would weigh against whether or not it's fair or not? I mean, what if that one, if you didn't have random drug testing and that one child was not identified and went on to bigger problems? So we don't really know if it's working or not. No one expected that the random drug testing would reduce positives to zero. But we don't know whether people have stayed away from it in order to avoid being caught, and that is, in my view, a positive judgment. The last thing that people have asked me about and said, isn't this the responsibility of the parents? Of course, it's the responsibility of the parents, but the school has a legal and an ethical responsibility to the students that are in their charge. In fact, more important than educating the kids, it's keeping them safe. And there's 100 years of case law and 100 years of doctrine about the school's responsibility to care for children in the absence of parents that makes it their responsibility. If a parent refuses to supervise their child, whether it's random drug testing, carrying weapons, whatever it is, that doesn't absolve the school of its responsibility to create a safe learning environment. My fear is if random drug testing is ended without a suitable substitution, and the next day, or the next month, or the next year, one child, and it only has to be one, has a problem with drugs, be it self-inflicted, or they did it to someone else, or whatever it is, the school board can't turn to that family and say, we did everything possible because you cut back. I'm not sure, it seems to me, as harsh as it may seem, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. If the school says, not our job, it's the parent's job, we're not going to get involved in drug testing. You want to test your kids? Take your kids to get tested. And then kids, as we know, can get around these things, and they show up in school stoned and something happens, the school will be liable, in my opinion. And I think you have to take that into consideration. So the bottom line is, whether or not you keep random drug testing or not is not as important as what you're going to replace it with. You cannot simply say, oh, no problem, it's the parent's problem, we've had too, we've had too few positive tests, problem solved, kick the can down the road, let's walk away from it. You can't do it. You can't do it from a legal or ethical standpoint, and you can't do it for the safety of the kids. Want all you need, all you need is one. And if the parents of that one say, if you would have had random drug testing or some other program, maybe my child wouldn't have had this problem. Yet you, we cut out random drug testing. We cut out dare. I don't know how many other things the school district has cut out, but it seems to me that we're not very interested in ending the drug problem in the schools if we continue to eliminate the programs that are supposed to control it. We don't allow smoking in the schools, we don't allow energy drinks in the schools, we do a lot of things for the safety and health of the kids. This is something you have to take very seriously. If you don't do random drug testing, you need to present to the public a vision of what you're doing that doesn't say every intervention has been eliminated. And that's what the view might be. That's it, thank you. Now I can go home.
Thank you, Dr. Rosenberg. Any other public input with regard to the random drug testing? Moving on to committee reports, start with HR?
HR? Oh, we have time.
Okay.
We can get back, we have old business, we have other opportunities.
The Human Resources Committee met on August 20th. We started with a discussion of the Assistant Athletic Director position. We had, we had created, I believe, at either one or two meetings prior, the board had approved the combination of Assistant Athletic Director and a Health and Phys Ed District Supervisor. Unfortunately, in reviewing candidates for that combined position, the administration could not find a candidate strong enough on both sides to actually fill that role. It is critical that for the start of the school year, we have an Assistant Athletic Director. So the discussion at the committee and the agreement that, the endorsement from the committee was that we go ahead with a candidate who has been found, who would be, believed to be an excellent candidate as the Assistant Athletic Director, and we would move forward from there, working on trying to get the curriculum coverage. If you remember, I think also, one meeting ago, possibly two, we had approved the retirement of Dr. C. from the high school, who was the last remaining high school-level curriculum supervisor. One of the other things that that job had entailed was kind of taking care of things at the high school, supplies and department-level coordination. Since that position is not being refilled, we discussed the creation of a teacher liaison duty assignment. This would be for teachers at the high school who already would have a duty assignment, so I believe we had talked about one teacher per subject area being given a duty of being that liaison to help kind of coordinate whatever things need to be done at a department level. The other thing we discussed as part of replacing that same position is the position of District Data Analyst. We've talked a lot about metrics. We talked about metrics for the students, we talked about metrics for, as part of the new evaluation criteria for our teaching staff, we talked about metrics for the district, but what we don't have is anybody on our staff who's a highly qualified statistical analyst. And so this position of District Data Analyst would fill that hole and be somebody we could go to for a solid statistical analysis of the data we get back from our testing results and our other programs. We also discussed, in general, the hiring for this coming school year. Dr. Rock, excuse me, Mr. Rocco had presented the status of his hiring so far. We discussed the vice principal search for Otten Road, as, and as we saw tonight, we have approved that candidate after a discussion there. And finally, Dr. Schiff spoke to us about a grievance that came to his level and was decided at his level, so it did not require any attention at the board's level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gillett, if you can report on the Operations Committee.
Yeah, thanks. Um, thank you, Mr. President. The Operations Committee met on August twentieth. We had a, um, number of items on the agenda, I'm going to speak about three tonight. First, I want to start with the, um, painting project bid that was, um, uh, not approved at our last board meeting. Um, and I, I wanted to, uh, well, um, Dr. Schiff and Mr. Mahmood, um, made a presentation to the Operations Committee on August twentieth outlining some of the events, um, that led up to that, um, bid being on the agenda, and it's not approval. And I want to just highlight a few of those things. First of all, um, there was one error at our last board meeting concerning the budget estimate for the painting project. If you recall, at the board meeting, I asked Mr. Mahmood, when we saw the, the bid amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, I asked him, "Is this in alignment with, um, what we estimated, uh, for this project?" And he said, "No, it wasn't." And we asked, "Well, what was it?" And, um, he said it was thirty-three thousand dollars. Actually, um, this is where the error occurred, actually, the, uh, amount of painting, uh, that that bid was for, uh, actually lines up with seventy-eight thousand dollars in our budget, not thirty-three thousand. So, uh, the amount that aligns with that bid specification was seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, worth of painting. Be that as it may, um, the, um, when administration went to get this job done, their first thought was that they can use a shared service agreement with the Middlesex County Educational Services Commission. A shared service agreement means that the project would not have to go to bid, there's already an established price, uh, for labor and materials, um, because someone else is doing these type of projects all the time. And we would add our, um, our project onto that. When the administration did that, they found out that it would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. At that point, when they saw that now this was so much over what we would normally put onto a shared services agreement, uh, usually, nothing over forty thousand dollars goes onto a shared, we usually bid out most things, um, you know, except for in very special cases, we'd try to bid out most things, um, that are over the generally accepted threshold. So, at that point, they said, "Well, we should, um, have this bid go out to bidders." As we learned at the last meeting, three contractors did pick up the bid specification, but was only returned by one contractor. And that one bid was for the aforementioned one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, and came to, uh, the board at our last meeting, and we, uh, we declined to go forward with that. Dr. Schiff and Mr. Mahmood did, um, uh, outline, uh, that they are looking at a process to make sure that our budget estimates, um, more correctly portray what will be the ultimate cost. When we do a project, when we are contemplating a project like this in the future, they're going to make sure that, um, there is some expert that has done this exact project before, uh, is involved with the process, either with our architect or maintenance supervisor, uh, Mr. Fruska, right from the start, so we have very, very accurate numbers, and Dr. Schiff even mentioned, um, it wouldn't be bad to have more conservative, uh, estimates. Make sure that they understand, "Look, don't give us, you know, some low-ball price right now, when this isn't a bid now, we want to know, how much does this type of project cost?" So that we can make real choices with our limited amount of funds, uh, at budget time. As you recall, these were, um, the, these were all priority items, but they were ranked. Um, and if we knew that this project would be ultimately twice as much, we may have made different decisions at that time about what to put, uh, on our capital, uh, plan. So, um, they're going to go forward with a new process for next year, and, uh, Operations Committee was satisfied with the report given, and, um, they are going to try to see if we can do some of those projects, some of the painting during the school year, uh, with, with money that is, is available in our budget, and, um, we'll get more, um, information about that as those projects come up along the line. So, that was the, uh, that was the synopsis of the events of, of the painting, just to clear that up. Uh, the second thing on our agenda was the announcement, um, from administration that, uh, the district is going to create a Sustainability Committee. This Sustainability Committee will be part of the district strategic plan, um, regarding , uh, green initiatives. The committee will meet maybe quarterly, uh, it's going to have members of, uh, um, administration staff, and possibly a board member. Uh, we're, um, going to find out from our attorney if a board president, um, selected board member can serve on a committee of this type. Obviously, we have board committees all the time, but this is a little different, it's a committee with mostly district employees and, uh, and administrators, so we're looking into that. And if, if that's possible, then, um, we're probably, you know, it'll be up to Mr. Kent's most likely to select a board member to serve on that committee. And finally, we had, um, many policies, and I'm not actually going to go through each one, uh, because, I'll tell you why, because they were all straight revisions recommended by our, um, consultant, Strauss S. May. Um, I don't think we changed any of them substantially, a word here or there from what they did, but, um, these were not policies that Operations Committee members or the board directed us to pursue, these were all either state, uh, changes in regulation that needed to be implemented in our policies, or, um, some other recommendation from Strauss S. May that needed to be implemented. Um, oh, one more thing, I will add four, I, you know, I always like to do three, because you're only going to remember three, but I'll add in four because it's a, it's a good one. The administration, um, gave a presentation, Dr. Schiff gave a presentation on the possibility of moving our school election to November. As you know, we discussed this earlier in the year when we had a, the first opportunity to do this. We, we declined at that time, but you can make this choice every year. Um, and Dr. Schiff, um, laid out the pros and cons, very nice presentation, as I recall. Uh, and, uh, looks like there, from the administration point of view, there may be more pros than cons at this time, Operations Committee did discuss it, um, and it will come before the board again, I'm sure. But one thing, uh, that will not happen is, I'm, I can guarantee Operations Committee is not going to have a recommendation on this until we see at least what happens in the first November school board election, which will be in, uh, three months. We need to see that election, we need to see what happens at, that election, do people come in, for instance, and only vote for, in the presidential race, and don't even vote for the school board members? That would be, from my point of view, that would be a disaster. That would be worse than keeping it in April. So, there are other things that we'd like to see from that, and then, after that, we're, it's likely that Operations Committee will either have a recommendation for or against at that time, or maybe we'll just have more board discussion. I, and the final thing on that is that, uh, Mr. Mahmood is going to find out, when is the last possible day that we can vote to change the election to November? We, we assume it's sometime near the end of January, before, um, board member candidates would have to pick up their packets for an April election, but we're going to get the exact date on that. That's it, well done.
Thank you, Mr. Gillett. Mrs. Ley, would you like to report on the Education Committee?
So, for the sake of, um, my fellow board members, I'm going to try to consolidate seventeen pages of minutes. I'll try to do what Greg is doing, so, um, and this will go in order, not in order of importance, because the most important thing was to approve curriculum and textbooks, but, um, in, in order of the meeting, the sequence of the meeting. So, uh, random drug testing, we had three action items. One was to ask administration to redo the survey, to provide additional information such as policy and the impact or the ramifications of, um, the tests. We think that would only be fair to people who take the survey, because then they have a baseline of information to provide good input. And then, the second, um, action item regarding RDT, or Random Drug Testing, is that, uh, we are, administration will collect data on the K-9 drug sweeps in other school districts, because we want to see the level of, um, success and the impact in those districts. And the third is that we are going to review the overall scope of the, um, not just the random drug testing program, but our program in, within the school district on how we handle, um, this, the abuse and alcohol and drug abuse in our, um, school district. So, that's what, uh, Dr. Rosenberg had alluded to before, and we had come to the same conclusion. Then, we went on to policies, and there were, we actually tabled one of the policies, because it had to do with, um, uh, allowing homeschooled students to participate in, uh, school sports. And because the NJSIAA hadn't developed a, um, a cross-district or, you know, overall policy, we didn't think it was a wise use of time, or, it, it's just not efficient to develop our own policy and have all the other towns doing the same thing. So, we're going to, um, table this, and also collect some more information, okay? The, then there were four policies for first reading, and the four are, um, one was to, uh...
I didn't hear the words, my apologies.
It was the concussion first, okay, yeah, sports-related concussion and head injuries, and you'd think, you know, this is common sense, but we wanted to have a policy in place to address, um, injuries. And then, we have a, uh, policy for pupil discipline and code of conduct, that's number two, and pupil assessment. And the fourth, I think the fourth was, okay, all right. Then, we, um, moved on, and we had, we approved sixteen textbooks, and, um, I'd like to share some of the input. Oh, right, the fourth policy, yes, I remember. The fourth policy was acceptable use of computers, um, within the school district. So, obviously, we are ramping up in our use of technology, and we needed to modify the policy. So, for the curric, the textbooks, um, there was some creativity there, we had, uh, in mathematics, Ms. Tracy Nurr explained to us that they evaluated programming textbooks, and they decided to, to choose an online one, and it's free. So, it's like, uh, um, it's been tested by peers, and, um, it seemed to be the most appropriate one for the class, and it fit, fit very well with the, um, previous, you know, like, when you have a series of classes that students can take, it fit very well in the middle of two of the classes, so, uh, I thought that was creative. And then, in, um, social studies, I'm going to share with everybody the overall process for selecting textbooks and curriculum within the social studies, um, because I think they did a commendable job, and I'd like to recognize it. So, what I did was, I asked Mr. Mingle to provide a summary, and I'm going to share it with the full board, because it was quite a lot to absorb. They had an evaluation committee that included teachers from all nine schools, and representing, of course, each grade level and special education. They met throughout two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, and they reviewed the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards, and Common Core State Standards for, um, social studies and literacy. They also surveyed a large, in hundreds, of, um, students, teachers, and people in the community to get a, to have a survey of what, what's the interest and what should be the focus. And, um, after all of that, they then were able to create an outline that they used in order to revise the curriculum during the summer. They also had, that, the same committee had a subgroup that, um, reviewed books, they had, they had like four publishers come in, and it's like a competition to see which, uh, textbook would be most suitable for our school district, considering that we were going to a one-to-one, uh, teacher, you know, the laptop and teacher, um, program, and also that we also had the pilot, uh, for the students. The, so, the outcome of that is that they picked the publishers that allowed a six-year contract, um, and then for, some of them, for the price of an extra two dollars, you could also have the textbook. And that was important, that was, uh, a deliberate decision, because if there's a downturn in the economy, we can, we still have the textbooks. And there was also the need to transition teachers and students from a textbook-based only way of learning to, uh, you know, to phasing in the, uh, technology. So, okay, and that's the basis of the approval for the textbooks and curriculum. And another, um, while we were reviewing those textbooks, there was, uh, a discussion on the sizes of the AP classes at the high school, because one of the classes only had four. So, that will be brought to the full board discussion, oh, no, I'm sorry, to, back to the Education Committee meeting, uh, during our next September thirteenth meeting. The, um, so, all of the, the sixteen books were unanimously approved by the, by the Education Committee meeting, not team. Then, curriculum, we had a lot to cover, so, uh, we covered K through A, social studies curriculum, we had the math, that computer programming that I talked about before, and then three AP classes, um, AP Gov., AP Psych., and AP Modern European History. And there was a, a, a great, uh, change in name for one of the classes, it used to be called U.S. History Since Nineteen Eighty, and they made it a little bit more interesting, and called it America in the New Millennium. So, it's like based on more, um, uh, current events. We also reviewed, um, gender studies, sociology, genocide and Holocaust studies, Phys Ed., which is like a sports injury class, and, um, we, there were a few math programs, one was for grade three, and then targeted intervention, which was really interesting, because they're able to use technology to, uh, have more individual attention for students, and I, I, I thought that was a good use of the technology. So, in summary, the, um, Education Committee strongly approves of, um, all the textbooks and curri, curriculum, and would like to encourage the full board to do so as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ley. Do we have any discussion on any of the committee reports from the board members? Okay. Moving on to new business, we'll start with new business from the public. So, at this point in time, uh, those wishing to address the board regarding new business may do so. Please include your name and address, and, um, typically, the board will not address issues presented, uh, but they may be referred to the Administration Board Committee or placed on a future work session, if warranted.
Okay, again, my name is Marissa Thaddick, and I live at six eighty-one Dover Court in Hillsborough. Um, I come before you for two different reasons. First of all, I will be asking for a supply list to be granted to the parents prior to the week before school, and then I will also be asking or talking to you about the extended school year program that had happened this past summer. I thank you for giving the class list before the first day of school, I can tell you that has happened to me in the past. However, I'm asking for the list to be distributed before the week before school. As parents, I'm sure you can understand that shopping right now, it's like a ghost town in the school, or in the, in Target and Walmart. Sales start in July, I can't find supplies for my children, and it's quite difficult, being as that I'm shopping for more than one child. So, I'm asking if you can supply a list online for parents, so that way we can start shopping prior to the week before school. I'm also asking to talk about the extended school year that has happened, this past extended school year. My son, who's four, and who's in an autistic classroom, had three different teachers within his five weeks. As I'm sure you can understand, children who are on the spectrum have a difficult time transitioning. With three different teachers... With three different teachers within five weeks, he had a very difficult time. And as you understand, extended school year, it's supposed to assist with regression and recruitment and with emergent skills. He unfortunately regressed. His behaviors were new behaviors, new negative behaviors. Therefore, he didn't have any status quo. He did not have these behaviors until this past summer. I'm asking that we look at the teacher turnover within that five-week period of time, especially for children who have issues transitioning, like a child who's on the spectrum. I'm also asking for feedback so we as parents can know how our children did within that time period. I don't know what my child did unless my teachers, unless the teachers have told me so. I don't know whether my child maintained or my child lost. I can tell you, I know my child lost because he had showed new behaviors. In addition, I'm asking for meetings to be held in the spring for parents of children who will receive extended school year. I can tell you, I had a meeting when my child started because he has a fall birthday. They predicted in the fall that he would receive extended school year. I don't know how anybody can predict a regression in recruitment period or emergent skills in September. I'm asking that those who would receive extended school year have meetings in the spring so we as parents can know that this is something that will happen. I'm also asking for at that time, parents receive feedback or form saying this is what our child will be working on. And then at the end of the extended school year period, I would like a feedback so that way I know this is what my child did and this is how my child did during that time period. I know we can work together to do this and I can tell you, as someone who has worked in extended school year in other districts, this is how it was done and parents were very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thaddick. Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Hello, Stephen Thomas, 13 Galaxy Court, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Couple of quick things, I really miss being on the school board. Issues are fascinating, but no interest, thank you very much. So district data analyst, it was a position that was mentioned. I guess my, my comment on that is it didn't, that sounds more like a shared service and is, and it's really hard to do statistical analysis and education. I know because I've done a lot of data analysis and statistical. And I guess I bring all this up because if you need some volunteer help, I'd be happy to help. Interesting stuff, I really like. So back to the, and I even looked at some drug study stuff and did a whole bunch, but decided to keep quiet because I didn't want, but I'll forward what I found to you if you're interested. So back to why I'm really here. So I guess my first question is, why was it tabled and when does it plan on being brought up again? Because I thought the NJSIAA had ruled and had provided policy guidance.
For which one?
This is the,
The, is, with regard to the NJISA, that was with regard to policy for home school students to participate?
Right. So I had heard, go ahead.
Go ahead.
They haven't provided guidance for how to evaluate students' academic eligibility.
So I tell you what, I'll forward what I found on the NJSIAA site that I know I also forwarded to some other folks that I thought, maybe I met it, read it wrong, gives guidance to school boards that say, here's what we think you can do it, it's up to the school board. So I'll forward that to you and I request that, you know, you, you bring it up and make a decision again. And I guess some of the other things I sort of think about and thinking about this is, you know, what are the financial impacts? Financial impacts to this school are pretty close to zero. Right? I mean, it's not like you have to pay for busing, which is already paid for kids who go to private school. You know, I've got four kids, pay taxes. And there's not a lot of home schoolers in Hillsborough or in any community. And of those home schoolers, most aren't foolish enough like ourselves to go through high school and all that. So I don't think you'll get this flood of home schoolers coming in to be part of it. And I, you know, I mean, part of the role of the school and government and citizenship is to educate our children, you know, thorough and efficient for all the children. Right? And as part of a community, I think sports is a very important part of that education as far as teamwork, discipline, perseverance, persistence. And I'd also include band and theater in those, in the arts. So I strongly request that you take it up again, seriously consider it and hopefully there will be a vote on it, you know, sometime soon. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
I, I can just share what's already in the minutes that we are going to, it was only tabled until the September 13th Education Committee meeting. And if you forward it, just forward it to BOE@https.us. That's our, that's our new email when the school district transitioned to Gmail. So it's a new, what is that? So https.us.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, just, just to clarify on that, we, we tabled it because we ran out of time and we anticipated we were going to have a pretty rich discussion. Thank you. Any other, any other new business from the public? Okay, any new business from the board members? Okay, would like to move into, oh, and then any comments from the public regarding the action agenda? Okay, any, and the board will do it as we go through the agenda. So I'd like to move to the action agenda and I'll hand it over to Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the board for its consideration of following action items under the Education section of the agenda. First, the resolution approving the submission and acceptance of fiscal year 2013 NCLB Program Plan, application of funds. Approval of the use of Title I monies for teacher salaries as listed. Approval of curriculum writing on attachment A3. Approval of the following staff members to prepare and facilitate the reach grade-three parent-student session as listed. Approval, approval of the student screenings. Approve, approval of the teachers to administer the WAPT screening for new ELL students as listed. And to approve the following summer secretary work as well as travel-related expenses and approval of, and revising the curriculum as discussed out of committee. Textbooks as well. Approval of staff members for attending the one-to-one pilot orientation workshop training. See attachment A11. Approval of the settlement agreement for child study team student. Approval of policy for first reading 2361, acceptable use of computer network and computer resources. Policy 2431.4 and regulation 2431.4, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussion and head injuries. Policy 2622, pupil assessment. Policy 5600 and regulation 5600, pupil discipline, code of conduct. Approval of the following field trip destinations. Approval of the overnight field trip as listed. That's all I have on our education.
It's not too much?
So I'd like to entertain,
It's all.
Like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A15 of the Education Action Agenda. Mrs. Lee?
So,
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just would like to thank Dr. Antunes and her team and all the teachers who wrote the curriculum. I, I've always respected teachers, but I have a newfound admiration for the amount of work they put in. And I think that while they, all the teachers have had to adapt to a new laptop and a lot of changes in the school district, I think we're seeing some excitement about the curriculum that they've worked on and embraced and I'm excited for the students.
Any other comments? I just, I just want to comment on the, on the history. It was a very thorough approach and with the new core curriculum, it actually allowed them to take a step back since it was the whole span to look at it. And for example, one of the things that they're doing, which, which I think is exciting is during the fifth through eighth grade, instead of kind of going broad but shallow to cover such a wide range, they're actually covering a shorter amount of time for each grade, which allows them to go more rich and deep, consult more of the original documents and, and things like that. So it's a, a welcome, a welcome change.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? All right. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Sure.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask the board for consideration of the following agenda items under Human Resources that I'm recommending to the board. First, to approve the resolution abolishing the 10-month assistant athletic director/k through 12 health PE supervisor and PE teacher position. And then recreate the 10, I'm sorry, then recreate. We're, we're actually keeping the, the old position, which is the resolution to recreate the 10-month .6 assistant athletic director and .4 health and physical education teacher position as discussed from the committee report. Recreate the 12-month transportation coordinator position and approve the job description. Resolution to file employer certification of disability. Resolution to create a 4-6 health, physical education teaching position due to increased enrollment. Resolution to create a district data analyst position and approve job description. Resolution to abolish a 12-month high school math supervisor position. I'm also asking for your approval of retirements as listed. Charlie Davis was with us since 1990, a phys ed teacher over at the high school. Deborah Gross, a science teacher, had been with us since 1995. She was a science teacher again at the middle school. And Fred Kuiper, who was a health and physical education teacher at Amsterdam School with over 40 years of service. We'd like to thank each of these educators for their service to our district and the children over the years. To accept the resignations as listed, as well as rescinding the contracts as listed, affirming the contract changes as listed, transfer and change in assignment as listed, the many leaves of absences. And affirming the appointments, we already did B/7.1. But also, we're hiring an assistant director teacher. This is the assistant athletic director. The teachers as listed, and there's many of them. School nurse, long-term substitutes. Instructional assistants, technicians, lunch aides, transportation coordinator, transportation aides, coaches as listed, co-curriculum advisors, mentors as listed. Some substitutes as listed on attachment B/7.14. And approve the summer athletic camp. People who worked at the camp. And approve the revised extended school year program as listed, revised summer work hours. Approve administrative in-district in-service day salary, salaries. And finally, approve the group changes as seen on attachment B12.
And you can tell that we're beginning the school year. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B12 of the Human Resources agenda items, excluding items B7.1, which we already acted on.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move the committee, the board, accept those items as listed.
And do I have a second? Mrs. Santafonte?
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Mrs. Haley?
I need to separate out two items, please.
Okay.
B, B dot 7.3 and B dot 7.11.
1.1, okay. Mr. Pulsofer?
7.14, please.
7.14, okay. Any other, Mrs. Swasson?
I just tap a comment.
Yes.
Attachment B dash, B12. I just want to make sure that the difference column wasn't meant to be negative. They, all of these group changes look to be getting raises, not decreases in salaries. And so I think,
Miss Kirk.
Okay.
Yeah, it actually, the way that it looks here right now in an accounting format, that is a negative indication. That is not what it's meant to say. That should be in the positive.
So it's negative to our budget, but it's positive to the teachers.
That's correct, that's correct. You can look at it that way, yes.
Okay, any, any other comments? Okay, so we're going to vote on items B1 through B12, excluding items B7.1, and we already acted on it, 7.1.1, 7.3, B7.3 and B7.14. And B7, B13 or B7.13?
7.13.
All right. I just want to check, the person who said B7.1, is that 7.11?
7.11.
Okay, thank you. Got it, all right. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
All right, we'll do these one at a time. Okay. So for, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B7.3.
So moved.
Any, any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Abstain.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes. Yep. And I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B7.11.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Abstain.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item, 13 that we just did?
11.
Okay. Item B7.13?
13?
B7, now somebody asked for 13.
And 14. So moved.
13 first.
Yep.
Try and do it in order.
So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
And lastly, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B7.14. Mrs. Swasson, and a second. Mrs. Santafonte?
Got you.
Okay. And roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Abstain.
Okay, Ms. Lee? Okay, Mr. Pulsofer?
Abstain.
Okay, Mrs. Swasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the Human Resources part of the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for the board's consideration for the following motions under the Operations section of the board agenda to accept the monthly financial reports, accepts the bills list, line item transfers, transportation bus bids, awards and renewals as listed. Rescinding the approval and awarding of transportation renewals as listed. Approval of the joint transportation agreements with Montgomery, Downbrook, Franklin Township. And award the routes for 2011-2012 Title I program as listed. And approve the following policies for first reading. Policy 0153, annual appointments. Policy 0167, public participation at board meetings. Policy 6470, payments of claims. Policy 7510, use of facilities. And policy 8613, waiver of pupil transportation. And finally, the motion to approve out-of-district placements for the 2012-2013 school year as listed on attachment C12.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C12 of the action agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Pulsofer?
Let me find my reference here. Looking at item C6, we're rescinding
Let me find my reference here. Looking at item C six, we're rescinding four bus routes, and then if you, that's followed by awarding three bus routes. And the three that are being awarded are three of the four that were rescinded. But is the fourth one not needed? I don't see it being filled anywhere, or is that out for bid separately?
Mr. Mahmood and Mr. Eckert?
He's in discussion with Jerry. I would tell you, but I don't know.
All right. Mr. Pulsofer, I was actually out last week for this particular resolution, but we'll look into that. I assume that that's the case, but I don't know that to be factual.
Okay.
I can't say that for a hundred percent. Mrs. Lay?
At the last, at the last board meeting, we had a question on the billing that we put aside one item, and so.
I can answer that.
Yes, please.
About the Morris jointure billing. Yeah, we put that aside, that's me. It just has to do with software. Their software sends us a bill that shows that they're billing for an hourly rate, but it's, that's the day rate. I think that was the question, that one rate looked like extravagant. There was three hundred dollars an hour or something. But that's three dollars per day. So we just went back, and Mr. Mahmood had the accountants call that vendor, you know, and check that and make sure. And I also went through the bills on Friday myself, and I saw it, and the notations were made to the purchase order. And it's, it was just the way their software was sending us the bill. That's all. That was the only, and this was another question. I believe that was the only question.
That was, just to clarify, that, we were charged the correct amount, but the way that it was worded on the invoice was an error. They called a, what was a day pay and hourly rate, and that's why it was pulled.
We were charged the correct amount.
We were charged the correct amount. It is on the list now for approval.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification, because if it was on the list and we didn't, we didn't understand or rectify it, then we, technically, board members would be approving the same thing that we were questioning before.
No, you're absolutely right.
Without even knowing, without even knowing what the resolution was or clarification.
No, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, that one.
So, thank you.
This was something that didn't, you know what, this is something that didn't come up. Did it come up at our Operations Committee meeting? If it did, I apologize for not reporting on it. I don't know if it did or not, because I also had a discussion with Dr. Schiff by phone just a couple of days ago, and with some of these issues came up, and also transfers.
Yes.
And, Mr. President, I'll talk right now about the large transfer, just in case that's going to be somebody's question. There's a very large transfer on the, on the accounts this month, somewhere neighborhood of half a million dollars in the area of special education. And Mrs. Johnston, Lenora Johnston, our Director of Special Services, looked into this, you know. And what happened was, this is for our out-of-district placements. And she is, in her words, and correct me, Dr. Schiff, if I'm wrong, this is related to me, by Dr. Schiff, she considers this year to be an anomaly. We had many more students needing an out-of-district placement that we didn't know we were going to have before the budget process. So very late in the school year, possibly even over the summer, it was recognized that these students had to go. Now, this is money that we have in other special education accounts that will now need to be transferred to the tuition accounts for the out-of-district placements. And as you saw in some of the backup material this week, we had the out-of-district placements, and you saw they're generally between forty and eighty thousand dollars per student. The other thing, I can also relate to you, something that goes along with the question about the Morris jointure billing for those, right, for special services, one of the things that tuition doesn't include when we send a student to out-of-district placement, it doesn't include the rates for speech, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and other services that they might need outside of a normal tuition payment. So we are concerned that some of those rates may be in excess of what we pay ourselves in district for those professionals. So Dr. Schiff is with Mrs. Johnston, are looking into that, and really want to see if we can get those rates down. We don't arrange for those services. The, the school does, the school that we sent to them does. But it may be possible that if the rates are extravagant, that we provide our own occupational therapist, our physical therapist, that goes, that we hired, that goes and sees that student in that district. And maybe just the mention of that would get them to renegotiate some of their contracts. It goes, it, you know, there's a little business to be done with that. But we're looking into that. We are very concerned. And it's, it's, it's good, and I must credit Mrs. Haas also with picking that billing, not anomaly, the invoice confusion. She picked that up because she did the bills in the previous month, and she's not here tonight, but she picked that up. And I think that was good, because now it's, we're asking more questions about some of these services. So that was good. Thank you.
Just to, just to provide some additional clarity on the, on the out-of-district, out of a district of about seventy-four hundred students, there are sixty-five that are in out-of-district placement. Twelve of those are, have been funded by a grant.
Okay. I have one other item for policies, one fifty-three, one sixty-seven, and sixty-four-seventy. So that's annual appointments, public participation in board meetings, and payment of claims. Those represent what was submitted to the Operations Committee, but not the feedback from them. So to, to clarify what those are, got a little friend here, here by the mic. On the annual appointments, that was driven by the opportunity to have some positions as optional, due to the nature of this district with how large it is, the committee, I've got to make sure that I'm reflecting this properly, Treasury School Moneys, the Assistant Board Secretary, and a member to serve as a delegate to the Somerset County School Boards Association, and the attorney as part of the annual appointment, not as an optional. And then the, I think the dentist was, was an optional, school dentist and insurance broker agents were listed as optional for that policy. On the public participation in board meetings, we said that for the, for the section on public comment, that individual public comment may, may be limited to two minutes, or if the total is thirty minutes, that gives the, the presiding officer the opportunity to cut discussion short to those terms if desired. And then the, the payment of claims, I can't remember which option was picked.
I think it was the second.
And then the second option was, was provided, which, which aligns with how the, which, with the current practice. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
My, my notes indicate that the Treasurer of School Moneys, we were going to list that as op, optional. Isn't that, what, that was, that was one of the positions that the state said could be optional, maybe.
That was the first one.
Do you, at, at the annual appointments, that was always required, and I believe we had some discussion about that. Now, now, according to state regulation, Treasurer of School Moneys can be an optional item. So we didn't have a recommendation for the board on whether to make, whether to appoint that, but should be in our policy as one of the optional items. In April, we can decide whether to have it or not. That was my recollection.
Right. The reason that the board has this policy to review is that there had, there was a change in law that allows for boards of education not to have a Treasurer of School Moneys. So it is optional. It's just a choice of whether or not you want to keep it on your recognition during annual reorder.
I think we, I think we decided, we had the discussion on that. We felt that the, the incremental cost for the treasurer was worth the additional audit.
Okay. No, we, we did, but I thought we, I thought, I'm, I'm, I notate that, that we were going to have it in the policy that says these appointments are optional, these each year, right? Or is that not how we have to write the policy?
No, a little bit different. The policy, the way that it's, that it's written now, and I can take a look at my notes.
In our policy, we can't just say some are required and these are optional, or we have to make that decision now.
No. For, for example, a district dentist in some large districts, they actually appoint a dentist of record that comes in and actually provides services to the students. We wouldn't have a, a district dentist. So that wouldn't even be part of the list of professional services that we, we, we renew annually. The board now can make a decision whether or not it wishes to continue to have a Treasurer of School Moneys. My recollection was, was that the, that the recommendation of the Operations Committee was that it continued to have a Treasurer of School Moneys, was my recollection. If, we can go back and take a look at the notes. Again, it's first reading.
So I guess I misunderstood how we have to write our policy. I thought, written into our policy, we can notate which we are requiring.
Right.
Because the state requires it, and which we can now say, and these are optional, each April, these are optional.
Right. So.
And we could throw dentists in there, because our policy will always state, and the following are optional.
Yeah. So what we were, what we were doing in the discussion.
And that's how we left it. I may mistake.
For the discussion, I thought it was, we wanted to go above what the state minimum was, and we felt that due to the, due to the nature and the size of the district, that we felt that it was prudent to have those as, as being just part of the regular, and not make it optional, just make it as part of policy that we do it.
Mr. Mahmood, can you just tell me one or two duties of the Treasurer of School Moneys?
Sure. The Treasurer of School Moneys, Mr. Gillette, actually balances our cash, our, our cash balances, and is able to, to make sure that our Board Secretary report is also reconciled. So the function is just a cross-check to what the Board Secretary cash balances are. That's primarily the job of the Treasurer of School Moneys.
And this may be a one-day-a-month duty, possibly, maybe more.
If even that.
Yeah.
Possibly, Mr. Gillette.
And this is typically, we typically appoint the Hillsborough Township Chief Financial Officer to this position.
Correct. The Treasurer of School Moneys, Mr. Gillette, also signs checks as well.
And this is, and we, the, not stipend, whatever, the salary for this is, am I correct, thirty-five hundred dollars per year?
It's, it's under four thousand, but I'm not sure the exact dollar amount at the moment.
Okay. Just I get them all out.
All right. Any other discussion with regards to the Operations Agenda items? Okay. We, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
That's sort of the action agenda item. Moving on to old business, first, any old business from the public? Okay. Any old business from the board? Mr. Pulsofer?
I just want to follow up on our earlier discussion of the random drug testing policy. I think that, you know, as, as we've had our own discussions, this is a very sensitive subject. It's an important subject, and I think, you know, we've, we've talked a number of times this year, not just about random drug testing, but in a number of areas, that we'd like to get public input. And I think, again, this is a case of something that has an effect on our entire community and our students, and, and it kind of indicates what direction we want to go and how we feel about this. And I, and I really hope that the public will, you know, choose to come out, or, or email, or somehow express your opinions about where you, where the public believes we should go with this, and what they believe is important about this. We need to, you know, talk about these items and think about it, and make a decision for the community and for our district. But the best position we can be in to make those decisions is with input from the public. And it's really important that the public shows up for things like this. And, you know, I, I think it, the responsibility falls on us in the end to make that decision, but we should make that as a group of people who are enlightened, both in terms of research into what we've been doing, but also enlightened by what the public wants to see happen in our district. And, and it would be a shame if we don't get any input for the board to deliberate and make that decision.
To, to build on to that, we've had three direct communications to the, to the board. Two of those were prior board members, and then we've had one from, from an actual parent of a student who opined and provided input via email to the board.
A real-life parent?
A real-life parent. Mr. Gillette?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank President Kins for going over the random drug testing policy today, for basically reading most of it and enlightening us as to what it entails. And I know that we did have a member of the public come, just one member, come to speak about that today, and I did see some people in audience taking notes. So I wanted to just say a couple of things in light of what we, or what was said from the public podium today. There's something like five hundred and eighty-something school districts. The New Jersey School Boards Association estimates maybe between thirty and forty of those five hundred and eighty school districts have a random drug testing policy. I can't believe that five hundred and fifty districts are in imminent danger of being sued out of existence, as was suggested by a member of the public tonight, because they didn't have a random drug testing policy. And in fact, in this district, when we're looking to form policy, we're looking for educational policies and educational initiatives, we look for what's called best practices. And best practices are, not always, but oftentimes are what are most employed. Not always, because some, you can find a best practice that's not much employed yet. But this has been years now. In the, in the five year, in the almost five years since we've had our random drug testing policy, New Jersey School Boards has not been able to, a representative from New Jersey School Boards, I read this in one of the newspapers, has not been able to find any other districts that have implemented a random drug policy since we implemented ours. The only mentions that they've been able to locate of random drug testing policy are either school districts considering it and rejecting it, or school districts abolishing their policies. And this is just a handful, of course, because there's only thirty or forty that have it. The other thing I wanted to mention about public input, patch.com, and I see their, their representative, their writer here tonight, did have a poll on their website. The poll, and this, I think they might have had thirty or so participants in the poll. I can't be exactly sure. I didn't write it down. The poll is ongoing. But the poll asked you to vote on three questions. Would you like to keep the random drug testing policy in Hillsborough? Would you like to abolish it, or would you like to change it? And I must say, the, it was pretty evenly split between the three. The problem with that is, for all practical purposes, there is no possible way to change it. Despite its legality and its constitutionality, this policy does walk on the razor's edge of constitutionality. It passed the New Jersey Supreme Court four to three, and we all know what that means. You get other Supreme Court justices that maybe are more civil rights-minded and less government-power-minded. Another challenge, and this could be unconstitutional. It's right on the brink. The, the point is that the policy we have is exactly modeled on the policy employed at Hundred and Central High School, which survived the court challenges four to three. So there's really no practical way for us to change it. If you're dissatisfied, and this is for the public, if you're dissatisfied with this policy in any way, that you want to change it, you want to abolish it, those are the same. Changing it or abolishing it is the same, because we can't change it. You might want to, if you're a member of the public and you're hearing this, you might want to channel your energy into other things that we can do to help this problem. Because, yeah, there is a problem. Alcohol and drug business problem in Hillsborough for many years. It was a big story in the New York Times thirty years ago at Hillsborough High School. You can look it up in New York Times online. Look up Hillsborough, New Jersey, around nineteen eighty-one or something, and marijuana use openly in the schools at that time in, in Hillsborough. So this is, sure, sure, it's a not great problem. But in my opinion, this is the last thing I'll say on this, because I know people want to go home, this is not a tool or a weapon on the war on drugs. This is the A-bomb of the war on drugs. If you employ this weapon, you better win the war on drugs with this weapon, because there are a lot of casualties, and it's all the innocent kids subjected to REM drug testing, or put in the untenable position of having to choose, being a conscientious objector. or put in the untenable position of having to choose, being a conscientious objector to this kind of invasion of their bodies, but having to choose between submitting to this program and not be participating in their activities. That's no choice at all, of course they're going to choose to participate in their activities. A conscientious objector cannot win. That's the casualties of, of this policy, and like I said, this is the, this is the bomb, you better, you better win the war with this one, and we saw from Dr. Antunes' report, which include not only the statistics of, which were mentioned tonight at the podium here, the statistics of how many positive results we had, but what wasn't mentioned tonight from the public was that the survey, which Dr. Kinst didn't mention, the survey on drug use, which showed no reduction in drug use. This is not a survey that we created, this is a survey that's created by respectable company, out of business now, that is in the business of just doing this, providing these type of questionnaire surveys that can be reliable, and that we can count on to make decisions, and it showed that it didn't work. We tried it, it didn't work. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Pulsofer?
I didn't think we were going to discuss this tonight, but since we are, with all due respect, Mr. Gillette, without having a control study outside of this district, you can't make any analysis of the statistics we were provided. You can't, you have, you have zero to compare to. You can't say it did better or worse, better or worse than what? We don't have a what to compare to. There was nothing in the analysis, both of the drug testing itself or the survey, that gave us a control group so that we could make the analysis of whether or not it worked. And this is what I've been saying all along, before we decide, we know it worked, we know it didn't work, let's get the rest of the data that we don't currently have.
The control, I thought, maybe I'm, maybe I'm using the wrong facts, because I'm not a statistician, I had the wrong nomenclature, because I'm not a statistician, but to me, the control group isn't really a control group, it's a baseline, and that's the study, that's the questionnaire survey that we did five years ago. So what it was then, we see what it is now.
Suppose the drug use in the community and in the state over that same five-year period had quadrupled, and we didn't, that would say we did a great job, but we don't have that number. It's not how we've done in the last five years, it's how have we done as compared to somebody else, some other group that did or did not do something for the next, for the same five years, and let's compare how we did and how they did. That's how you analyze whether or not your survey and your study was actually successful.
Mrs. Haley?
You know, I have to go back to the fact that this, well, last school year, you know, we don't have good data, period, because for whatever reasons, we only tested a very small amount of the population, when, to me, I think that's a huge failure, I, I am really disappointed that those numbers were what they are, because we can't even use those numbers to give good data, you can't, it's impossible, and I have to reiterate what members of the public have said, what I've seen comments online, other discussions that we've had, and, and I know that Mrs. Lay talked about, you know, having Chief Kaminsky in, and, you know, but what is our plan going to be if we take the random drug testing away? So until we have some kind of concrete plan that I think everyone can live with and say, we're taking a really hard line on this, then I, I just don't see how you can say, get rid of it this year, when last year, we don't have good data.
Mrs. Wasson?
I just wanted to also comment on the issue of revising the policy versus abolishing the policy, and I know I've been talking to a lot of people, you know, it's been basically my main topic of conversation at Royce Field's Film Club these days, which doesn't make it fun very, for me, but I think there, you know, the policy is the policy, and I don't know, I think, I, I agree with Mr. Gillette, I don't know how much we can change the policy, but the policy doesn't really speak to the implementation of it. You gave a very good overview regarding what happens if there's a positive test, the policy as written really doesn't speak to that, and in fact, you know, we, we asked, what is the, what is the, what happens if there's a positive drug test, and we set, and we were told that for some period of time, we thought it was about four weeks, they would be, students would not be allowed to attend their after-school activity. At freshman orientation for parents this past week, Mr. Finesi, the athletic director, said it was sixty days, and, but it's unclear to me how, and parents ask me this, and I do have to educate myself, what happens if it happens at the end of the year? Well, for the next sixty days, the kid doesn't have an activity. Does it start at the beginning of the next year, what, you know, how is it actually implemented? And those things can actually be changed, and so I think we've been talking about it in the Education Committee, what the survey really needs to ask, and the specificity of that survey is going to be important, and one thing that we need to do before we ask any questions is educate the community on how it actually works, because I think there is misinformation out there.
Okay, any other old business? As we've stated before, it's a complex issue, there's a lot of information, so I think we've moved, moved it forward. I also wanted to say that with this board, we take this very seriously, we're being very deliberative about it, and we're rolling it out, and having the, the public input and the continued conversations and plans for this. Any other old business from the board? Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. We'll see you at the next meeting, which is September tenth. Thank you very much.